Please know that others can also view your name. If you have questions about the raise hand feature or technical difficulties during this call, you may send a chat message to the host. We're not, not taking comments through chat today. We're gonna give it another minute or so. I think we're ready.
All right, well, let's get started. A good evening. I'm Karen Hayes and I'm chief of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division's Air Protection Branch. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to participate in this evening's public hearing on the draft air quality permit for steragex. The Air Protection Branch protects air quality in Georgia as authorized under the Georgia Air Quality Act. And we do this by issuing air quality permits to facilities that are subject to specific state and federal air regulations. And then making sure those facilities comply with the conditions of their permit. Steragex has an existing air quality permit which remains in effect. What the draft permit does is add additional requirements that go beyond the existing permit. These additional requirements include a limit on the amount of ethylene oxide that can be used at the facility, a cap on ethylene oxide emissions from the facility, and the installation of a continuous emissions monitoring system. The draft permit also requires the continued operation and maintenance of the new air pollution control equipments which are already installed and operating. When you read the draft permit, you'll see that some conditions appear to be less stringent than others. And that's because the draft permit contains permit template conditions that are in all air quality permits, state and federal regulations that apply to specific equipment at the facility, and new requirements like I just mentioned. So those permanent conditions do not contradict each other. They all apply, but the most stringent permit condition always prevails. The draft permit is just that. It's a draft. Changes may be needed based on the information we heard during yesterday's hearing, during this evening's hearing, or in comments submitted to us in writing. So during this evening's hearing, we'll be focused on listening to your comments on the draft permit. That means we will not be responding to comments during the hearing. Your comments will be carefully evaluated and our responses will be published at a later date in an addendum to the permit narrative. After the public hearing sessions, the close of the comment period, and the evaluation of the comments we received, we will determine if any changes to the draft permit are needed. We will then make a recommendation to the EPD director to issue the permit with no changes or issue the permit with changes based on the comments received or new information. Now, before I turn it over to the permitting program, I want to talk about our ethylene oxide monitoring study. This is the air monitoring that EPD is doing to measure ethylene oxide concentrations in the air in Georgia. Until US EPA's 2018 air monitoring study in Illinois, there was very little information on ethylene oxide concentrations in the air nationwide. Georgia EPD began monitoring for ethylene oxide in June of 2019, and we are now monitoring in five areas across Georgia. We expected this work to be very challenging, and it has been. The results from our ethylene oxide monitoring study to date are at the EPD ethylene oxide webpage. You scroll down to the bottom of the main webpage, you'll find it. Here are some preliminary findings. The concentrations we are measuring near steragex on average are very similar to the concentrations that we are measuring at our South to Cab monitoring site, which is a national air toxic trend site and not near any known source of ethylene oxide emissions. The concentrations measured at General Coffee State Park, our rural background site are averaging slightly lower. And the concentrations we are measuring near another commercial sterilizer in Fulton County are averaging higher. The data is variable and the data precision is not good. Also, the results appear to vary depending on the laboratory used to analyze the sample and the type of sampling equipment. This indicates that the EPA method used to analyze for ethylene oxide needs improvement at the low concentrations present in the air. And to that point, US EPA is actively working on proving the analytical method. In November of last year, Georgia EPD received some funding from US EPA for a study to improve ethylene oxide monitoring. Our study will compare the ethylene oxide concentrations measured using different types of sampling equipment and is analyzed from different labs. This funding will also allow us to continue monitoring your steragex through April. Again, thank you for logging on to hear, to the public hearing, and thank you in advance for your comments. Now Eric Cornwell, who is the manager of the permitting program, will give a presentation on the draft permit. Then after some instructions, the public hearing will begin.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing to receive public comments on the draft air quality permit for Steragex USA LLC, okay, A Steragex. This is located at 2971 Olympic Industrial Drive in Atlanta, in Cobb County, over here Smyrna. Once again, my name is Eric Cornwell, and I'm the manager of the stationary source permitting program here at Georgia EPD in the air branch. Today, we're meeting via Zoom, a free webinar conferencing service that also allows people to call in by telephone. The hearing is being recorded and will be available after the hearing on the Georgia EPD website. This is the, this is the second hearing we've had so far on this. We had a hearing yesterday afternoon. We'll be giving the exact same information session in a few minutes, a PowerPoint presentation. We'll be receiving comments after that. So this is hearing number two of two tonight. Before I start the formal hearing process, I do want to give a short presentation on the draft permit. Okay, next, okay, so why are, why are we here tonight? We're here to talk about Steragex air quality permit, specifically the proposed draft air quality permit. So this permit is, adds additional requirements to the current permit, which is still in effect. So this hearing will be recorded, as I mentioned, as we found on our webpage. This is hearing number two of two. Little bit of background, this hearing was advertised in our weekly public advisory in a public notice and on our webpage. Next. All right, I'm going to give a little bit of background on the facility, what this facility does, what regulations may apply, how this facility used to control air emissions and what they're doing now. So Steragex began operation at this site in 1967 as Griffith Microscience. What they do is they are a medical device sterilizer, and they predominantly use ethylene oxide as the sterland. So from a permitting side and a regulatory side from, from air quality regulations, the preliminary regulation is something called a MACT, Maximum Achievable Control Technology. It also goes by NESHAP, National Emissions Standard for Hazardous Air Pollution. This is found in a CFR at 40 CFR 63 subpart O. Supplies to ethylene oxide sterilizers around the country. Those requirements right now are in the current permit, the current facility, or the way the permit currently is, has those requirements in there, plus some of the requirements that were above and beyond what Sabardo has in it. We'll talk real briefly about the, the process, so everybody can really understand what's going on. And then we'll talk about where those emissions are coming from and what Steragex is doing to control those emissions. Next. Okay, so ethylene oxide sterilization process. It's going to, it's processing or sterilizing medical equipment typically already in bags and boxes, so and, and plastics and metals and really even fabric. And so these are loaded in on a pallet size operation and put into one of 10 sterilization chambers. So loaded into the sterilization chamber, door shut and locked. A vacuum pull is pulled on those chambers and ethylene oxide after that is then piped into the sterilization chamber. What those amounts and how long they sit there and dwell, so to speak, in that cycle typically specified by the FDA. So if it's so, gonna charge it with 50 pounds for four hours, just for example. So after that sterilization cycle is complete and the dwell time has been satisfied, those vacuum pumps are turned on and sucks that ethylene oxide out of those chambers and sends it to air pollution control devices. So after that happens for a while and definitely oxiders removed from those sterilization chambers before those loading doors can be opened. The, the, what's called the back vents are opened up when those, those doors are opened or, or turned on. The back vent fan will pull whatever remaining ethylene oxide maybe in that, in that chamber and send that to a control device. So the, the trucks or the chambers are unloaded and these pallets are sent on forklift and they're taken over to the, what's called the aeration room. So aeration room is where products are loaded in there and they're degassed. They just kind of sit and ethylene oxide, any kind of residual ethylene oxide in there is de-gassed and that, and that aeration room is also controlled. Meaning the emissions that are from inside there are routed to control device. And then after sufficient degassing time, sterilized equipment is then removed from the aeration room and then sent to the warehouse and then sent out in trucks. Next. So what are the operational and emissions control changes that Steragex has made in 2019? Well, they've routed their sterilization chamber vent emissions through additional pollution control devices. So instead of getting one pollution control device, now they're going to have three, and I'll walk you through that in a second. They've also installed a pressure system over the workplace and warehouse area to capture the air and any ethylene oxide that may be present in that warehouse and workplace. That is routed to a new air pollution control, control device. Other thing they've done is they've installed, or they didn't install, these were already existing. They're using high stacks to reduce the ambient concentration to areas near the plant. Next. All right, so just want to kind of break that down to what, what we're talking about here. We have the process and the emissions. Simple, you know, we have medical, you know, unsterilized medical equipment goes in to the sterilization chambers. After that, it goes to the aeration room. After that, it goes out to the warehouse and then in trucks. So pretty straightforward process. So air pollution controls. So what this diagram here shows is what's currently represented in the current air quality permit. Before the, the recent updates were done at the facility. So what do those include? In the past, the missions from the sterilization chambers would be routed to a wet scrubber. This is a seal coat brand wet scrubber. This uses water and acid to react with the ethylene oxide and scrub it out of the air, so to speak, and that went to an existing stack, not the, not the stacks that will be used. 95% of that sterilization chamber ethylene oxide gets routed through those vacuum pumps to that seal coat scrubber. So the one of the 100 pounds to go into the chamber, 95 go to the scrubber. One goes to the back vent, four goes to the aeration room. That's based on some EPA data. So in this, this diagram, you also see that the, at the backside of those sterilization chambers, that's the back vents. Those go to a control device called an AAT wet scrubber. And then followed up with dry absorber beds. So the product is then moved to the aeration room. That aeration room also goes to that same AAT scrubber and then those dry beds. I did want to point out that the aeration room is, is required by the MACT to be controlled. The chamber vent is required to be controlled under the MACT 40 CFR 63 subpart O. The back vents are not required to be controlled, but Steragex has been controlling those. Then when the product comes out, it goes to a warehouse that up until recently was standard warehouse. Emissions were emitted, quote, fugitively outdoors and things like that. Next. All right, so what are the new air pollution controls look like? What, what do we have going on now? So really, this, the process is the same. Those vacuum pumps go to that seal coat scrubber. But instead of going out a, that short stack, they now run to the AAT scrubber and then through the dry beds. So they go, they went from one control device to three control devices and then out that tall stack. So that makes a, a pretty big difference there. The other big change that's being made is that the warehouse area and work areas are now enclosed, controlled, and that goes to a new control device. A new set of dry absorber beds. I want to point out that just in case you're wondering about the, the airflow here, the vacuum pumps are pulling air at what they call the high concentration, low volume state, whereas the aeration room is much more of a low concentration, high volume state. Next. So I want to talk about the draft permit that we're here really tonight to talk about. So what are the changes that we've made and where do we go from here? So the draft permit, it adds additional and more restraint, more stringent requirements than what's in the current permit. The draft permit is issued will replace the current operating permit, which remains in effect. So the current permit is not nearly as stringent as this draft permit. One of the things this permit would do is it'll formalize that process and control changes that were made. Right now, the permit does not really recognize those new control devices. The draft permit goes beyond state and federal regulations for VOC and ethylene oxide. So the permit will still contain that 40 CFR 63 subpart O verbiage in it, but in addition to that, the permit will have more stringent state requirements. So I think Karen had mentioned, there's really kind of two levels of, of stringency here. And we're making sure that all the emissions at the facility are now going to be captured and routed to a control device. Next. All right, so continue. Don't get down to, to some of the weeds here. We're proposing to have an annual usage cap on the ethylene oxide at the facility. Also, we're proposing an annual emissions cap. Right now, we have that to be 84 pounds per year. So 84 pounds is you know, that's the weight of what, two, five gallon buckets of water, roughly. More stringent control efficiency requirements. More frequent testing and monitoring. So in this case, we, we took what was in the permit and really made it one level more frequent. One of the things it does is it's going to require the installation of a system to continuously monitor ethylene oxide emissions. Everybody knows this is a SIMS, Continuous Emission Monitor. So the condition is to continue with the mission monitor or SIMS would be located and measure the emissions coming out of both of those stacks. So there's, you know, all the, all of the 84 pounds worth of emissions would be monitored at one of those two stacks. Other thing this permit's going to contain is to acquire the, the permitee to report any spills or leaks that are not part of, you know, not, not normal operation. Reporting those leaks and spills per recent state law, law been, been added on the books back last year. All right, next. All right, what are the next steps here? About to shut up and let y'all talk. We're going to evaluate those verbal and written public comments. We're going to respond to those public comments and writing in the addendum to the permit narrative. And we want to make those changes to the permit as appropriate. So that's really the next steps, next steps for tonight will be, I'm going to take about a, a one minute break while we set up to start the official public hearing portion, where I'll read a quick statement and we will then take your comments verbally. So give us about one minute. Next. All right. Today's date is February 10th, 2021. The time is now 6:22. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the draft air quality permit for Steragex. Your comments will become an official part of the EPD record. Georgia EPD will also receive written comments on the draft permit through February 25th. You can send your written comments to epd comments at dnr.ga.gov. Submit those by 4:30 on the 25th. Please use the subject, subject line, Steragex Air Quality Permit. This public hearing was advertised by contacting individuals with a known interest using EPD's public advisory email subscriber list and by posting the notice and associated materials on EPD's website.
If you would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. You could access the raise hand feature by moving your cursor to the bottom of your screen and clicking the reactions icon and then clicking raise hand, or it could be at the bottom of the participants list. I will then call on you to unmute your mic and make your comment. If you're calling in by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If you're unable to find the raise hand features, send a chat to the host. Please limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. We will not be taking questions or comments through a chat box today. But you can submit written comments to epd comments at dnr.ga.gov. Jenny Shover. Your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end and proceed with your comment.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jenny Shover, and I am a 21-year resident of Smyrna, living and working approximately 3.4 miles from the Steragex facility. I joined yesterday's hearing and returned for a second day because much of what was said continues to concern me. The proposed draft permit simply does not go far enough. It has gaps and loopholes that don't adequately protect the community from Steragex and ETO. The company has proven time and time again that it will exploit any and every angle in the name of profit, all while pretending that it is for the virtuous purposes of benefiting all of mankind. It is time to get serious and stop assuming that this company will magically start doing all the right things. Georgia EPD's own mission, as presented on your website, includes taking the lead and ensuring clean air and pursuing a foundation for healthy communities. And your guiding principles include serving the public by implementing state laws, rules and policies that protect human health, which requires the use of comprehensive scientific and technical information to support clear, practical, well-documented and timely decisions. For this reason, I implore you to follow your own mission and guiding principles. There is no question and no debate about the fact that ETO is a known human carcinogen. Its presence is completely counter to clean air and a healthy community. As I understand it, this permit would allow Steragex to select a company to install monitoring equipment on their stacks and then self-report the supposed results to EPD. That's tantamount to the fox guarding the hen house. I simply can't fathom why this would be acceptable to EPD, and I can assure you it is not acceptable to the community. EPD should handle this directly by engaging a monitoring firm chosen by EPD with Steragex footing the bill. Also, the draft permit seems to rely on an improbable assumption of zero fugitive emissions, which is an unproven but suggested benefit of the newly installed negative pressure system. As we all know, any ETO residue that remains on sterilized materials after they leave the confines of the negative pressure area are in fact fugitive emissions. EPD should validate this improbable assumption by conducting routine, unannounced and ongoing ambient air monitoring at the fence line, preferably using a mobile SIMS unit. Lastly, the permit, the permit mentions nothing about fence line monitoring or air monitoring throughout the community. How will EPD know if this new emissions equipment is even working? If it is as supremely effective as Steragex says it is, they should welcome all forms of impartial testing to eliminate the community's concerns about self-monitoring and self-reporting. SIMS testing by EPD at the fence line with SIMS immediately verifiable results is the only approach that will deliver unquestionable accountability and transparency. Who does the testing, where the testing happens, and when results are available are collectively necessary requirements to ensure that Steragex either toes the line or finally learns that Georgia will not tolerate any gaming of the system and poisoning of this community. Enough with the hand slaps and deferential treatment. It is time to give this permit some teeth. I urge EPD to develop a sense of urgency, step up, and fully protect citizens of this community. Consequences matter. Our health and clean air matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Jennifer Davis, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name, record, and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Davis. I live in a neighborhood affected by Steragex about a mile away from their operation with my husband and daughter. I have attended almost every public meeting held regarding their operations since the WebMD article came out. I'm most both shocked and disturbed at each of these meetings based on what I heard. Along with Jenny, I also came to the town hall yesterday and, and did not feel like it appropriately covered what the air permit needs to do. As far as the meeting back when the WebMD article came out, I came with an open mind to Campbell Middle School at that first meeting to hear their president, Jim McNabb, gloss over the potential dangers of ethylene oxide emissions, including his own comparison about it being similar to breathing in the off gas of a rotting banana on your kitchen counter. He was often unable to answer residents' questions regarding facts about leaks, safety lawsuits regarding explosions of injuries of workers, et cetera. It was clear to me then that this company was dishonest and a major danger to our neighborhood. I do not want Steragex operating anywhere near a residential area, especially somewhere as dense with residential housing, schools, and playgrounds as Smyrna is. If it is not possible to make them pack up and leave, I believe the air permit needs to be as detailed and direct as possible. In the past, there has been no communication from the EPD or Steragex to the residents of our neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods to let people know when there were dangerous leaks in our area, which is completely unacceptable. After reading the details of this permit, I do not believe there is nearly enough detail to keep us safe and to keep Steragex honest and transparent, especially given their lack of transparency to date. of transparency to date. They have proven time and time again that they cannot self-monitor, which is rarely a good idea anyway when there are financial benefits to lying involved. I would like to ask that the state and the EPD be the ones to provide monitoring at the stack in the ambient air, and most importantly, on the fence line at the expense of Sterigenics. There needs to be clear repercussions if the criteria of the air permit is not met, and the EPD needs to fight on our behalf to keep them honest or have them pack their bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Rusty and Carrie Clark, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
Hello. My name is Carrie Clark, and I live less than two miles from the Sterogenic plant. It is my understanding that despite the danger it poses to my community, Georgia EPD has no intention of stopping operations at this plant. I am commenting and asking the EPD to pause any permits for this facility for the following reasons. Cobb County had this facility shut down after learning the facility operated quietly and knowingly for years under the wrong permit. New requirements from Cobb have yet to be met, but Sterigenics is open and operating under the false pretense that they could sterilize PPE. The FDA went around local officials last April and ordered Sterigenics to open. This abuse of federal bureaucracy is wrong because no one wants a mask sterilized with a known carcinogen. Our frontline workers deserve better than that, and I really hope they are not subjected to ETO and their PPE. The CEO of Sterigenics made multiple public appearances in 2019 and has downplayed the company's secrecy and lack of transparency with the community and with Cobb County. He claimed to not have knowledge of injuries or leaks at the Smyrna plant. The weeks after he made those claims, the media investigated and found a specific incident where an employee was permanently injured and two more secret leaks came to light. I find it hard to believe the CEO did not know about these serious incidents, and he cannot, and cannot trust his ability to be forthcoming with the community and officials. Finally, Sterigenics sought and was able to gain a restraining order against the Cobb County Fire Marshal, and it makes no sense. The company endangers our community, and the appointed watchdog is banned from entering. If this company is operating so safely and within their legal means, then they should welcome the fire marshal's inspection. They should be happy that the fire marshal can provide surrounding neighborhoods in both Cobb and Fulton County with peace of mind. The idea that any business, especially one whose single means for profitability comes from the use of this incredibly dangerous chemical, can bar the county official whose sole responsibility it is to protect the community is bizarre and wrong. If the EPD ignores these reasons and grants the permit, then there should be fence line monitoring, monitoring by an independent party at all times. They should not be allowed to self-monitor. The EPD should also commit to more air testing in surrounding neighborhoods, including mine, stiff and severe penalties for leaks, as well as a system to notify residents of leaks fast. The permit honestly should include something about the Cobb Fire Marshal being allowed back in to do their job once again. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Carrie. Kale Conley, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
My name is Kale Conley, and I thank you for having the public hearings. I have some specific substantive questions that I would ask the EPD to consider and address either in the permit or related documents before the permit is issued. Number one, is Georgia EPD's procedures for testing and monitoring sources of air pollutants does not specifically address ETA? Can we expect this will be revised for Sterigenics in the upcoming Sims installation, and will the public have any involvement or comment on changes to the written procedures? Number two, we are, or I urge that the EPD utilize a US EPA risk factor for screening not based on older models such as the 214, 2014, but instead use it a minimum to 2016 more protective US EPA risk factors for screening. I'd ask the EPD to clarify how you are comparing the use of Georgia's state air toxins, air toxics compliance limits to ETO versus US EPA in your risk analysis in the model. How is EPD planning on obtaining compliance with Georgia air toxins compliance if your model already shows exceedance of ETO for the acceptable ambient concentrations or ACCs? Does EPD have any intentions of carrying out a full human health risk assessment other than a modeled risk analysis? Why is there no current data showing actual measured versus modeled concentrations of ETO at the facility from its emission points noted in the permit? Using actual measured data would sharpen the model outputs. What was EPD's determining factor for distances at the boundary line and receptors as noted on page two of the input data? For example, further questions in that regard? Why are there no plume models to show estimated downwind areas of impact from ETO to show a more defined downwind impact area? As you know, ethylene oxide can last in the air for weeks and transported by prevailing winds. Why are there additional discrete receptors in the east and south that are not shown on the maps? Are the four receptors in the permit assumed to all be downwind that are on the map? Why are no wind rose plots constructed to show actual downwind versus upwind locations? And what is the area considered by EPD to be upwind? Does your risk analysis take into account sensitive populations? Finally, in regard to the source data in the reference to 84 pounds of emissions during any consecutive 12-month period, will EPD justify with actual emissions data that shows facility-wide ETO emission rates are only 84 pounds per year? It appears to be based only on modeled or estimates and nothing measured. And also, what are the monitoring measurements in place to ensure that there are strict controls used to ensure that there are no time exceedances occurrences? In other words, making sure that limits continually are below 84 and not simply averaged with lower and higher months over a 12-month period? Thank you for consideration of these comments and addressing these issues and for continuing to try to do more than has been done to protect the citizens of this community.
Thank you, Kale. Dee Mosby, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
Yes, my name is Darrell Mosby. Good evening, everyone. I'm the general manager of the Sterigenics Atlanta facility, and I've had the good fortune of leading our team since 2010. The process used at our Atlanta facility and at other facilities across the country accounts for the sterilization of more than $20 billion critical medical device products every year. That's roughly half of the medical products and devices that require sterilization in the U.S. For many of those devices, ethylene oxide sterilization is the only method that meets FDA standards for sterility. The work my team and I do at our, every day at our facility is vital to protecting the health and safety of patients and healthcare workers, people just like you and me, right here in the Atlanta metro area and around the globe. In the past year, we have sterilized millions of products at our facility. These include life-saving IV tubing, surgical kits, cardiac catheters, and hospital gowns and gloves used to prevent infection. Many of these products have been in high demand due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The work we do is vitally important, and we do take our jobs very seriously. As part of our jobs, we are committed to outperforming applicable environmental health and safety regulations. We consistently operate in full compliance with our EPD permit. The new permit we're here to discuss relates to the enhancements we voluntarily installed to our emission control systems in 2019. We voluntarily agreed to make those enhancements, even though we were already operating safely and in full compliance with our EPD permit and applicable regulations. Under Georgia's EPD supervision, a third-party tested the enhancements. We're proud of the fact that those third-party tests verified the effectiveness of our enhancements. They demonstrate that our emission controls perform significantly better than the total ethylene oxide removal requirements established by EPD. Our actions reflect our continuing commitment to achieving the highest level or emission control technically possible. The new permit should allow us to adhere to that continuing commitment and enable us to continue our vital work meeting the demands of our nation's healthcare system. We are reviewing the details of the permit, and our technical comments will be provided to the EPD later this month as part of the public comment process. The bottom line is that we are operating the most advanced emission controls at any sterilization facility anywhere in the world. Our facility is safe for those of us who work here and for the surrounding communities. We look forward to continuing the important work that we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Darrell. Beth, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
Thank you. My name is Beth Ford. I live here in Smyrna, approximately two miles away from the Sterigenics plant with my husband and my six-year-old son. I've read many of the articles about this issue and have attended many of the meetings since the WebMD article came to light. This issue is very important to me and my family, and I'm thanking you for the opportunity to share my opinion. My position is that I want Sterigenics not operating in a residential area. The proposed permit does not go far enough. The lack of transparency over the past several years has created an environment of distrust among our community, and the only solution is to permanently move the Sterigenics plant to a non-residential area. My reasoning is that ETO is simply not safe for our health. It's a known carcinogenic. We've all read the stories of families in the area who've been affected by cancers. It's obvious by the precautions that the Sterigenics workers take for their own safety, as well as the documented explosions, that this chemical is not safe. The people of Smyrna are not willing to be adversely affected health-wise in favor of Sterigenics corporate profits. Also, this health concern is affecting our community. While our individual health is my top concern from this issue, it's worth noting that this issue is also affecting real estate values, as noted by the devaluing of 2020 property tax assessments for homes near the Sterigenics plant. If this issue is not corrected, our community will continue to be affected in an adverse way. People simply don't want to move to an area that has known health concerns, which cannot be avoided. I specifically chose to move to Smyrna 10 years ago, and I'm among those who are appalled to learn that this plant has been allowed to operate as it has been. I again state my position, the Sterigenics needs to move to a non-residential area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. A Kurt, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
This is Dr. Andrew Kurt. I live just about one mile away from the Sterigenics plant. I live in Parket-Vining's community. I want to start with a question for Karen, and I truly hope she will answer this. It's not a very difficult one. If the aeration really works, why were levels of ETO so high at the illegal warehouses that we've discovered over time? And how are we seeking out other warehouses? I would hope that that would be something that you're looking into and taking with full seriousness. I want to, at the start, also refer to an important piece of current medical research and is proving the negative impact. It's from the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health, late in 2020. The article is "Levels of Ethylene Oxide Biomarker in an Exposed Residential Community," and it concludes, and I quote, "These results suggest that facilities that emit ETO may put nearby communities at risk of cancer and other associated health outcomes." And this is not, you know, these are not the paid people, you know, who can foster all kinds of deception on behalf of the company. Instead, this is proven scientific material that we're dealing with, and we have to take that with due seriousness. Why isn't area or fence line testing continuing right now, especially after the obvious grave concerns raised in previous studies that demonstrate elevated levels of ETO? And there's a correspondence with ETO facilities, that's very clear. When is my neighborhood going to be tested? It has not been tested, Parket-Vining's. How exactly are we being protected fully from explosions? And we're not talking about a small danger here. One can refer solely to the case in Spain at a Stero, at a, at a ETO plant there, I believe it was actually Sterigenics. Either way, it's the same exact gas, and these dangers are obvious. Instead, there seem to be interruptions to the, to the, you know, to the fire department's ability and the fire marshal to get in there and properly diagnose what's going on there. For EPD, this must be, you know, you all must be in the lead in forming and protecting Georgia residents. That, that should be your pride and firm purpose. I shouldn't have to even say that. And so I ask pointedly, what are you doing to accomplish this ethical and institutional or governmental obligation? And you might say, well, here, we're doing this, or we're doing that. But people, you have to understand, do not feel that you are doing much. They really do not. Just ask them and hear what people are saying right now, tonight, again, for the second night in a row. These are not people coming up with silly notions, and you're not silly fears. This is a matter of literally deadly severity, and we didn't come up with this information. We didn't know anything about it. It was the EPA itself, which we learned designated this gas as human carcinogen. That's been proven, and then several times, and several tests have revealed the clear dangers. So faced with the obvious and grave concerns, what is, you know, at stake here is so serious, the self-reporting, how can that possibly be acceptable? And why is such improvement needed when, in fact, Sterigenics has been saying for so long that they are reducing, they are reducing? They've been saying the same thing for so long that they're reducing to practically nothing, the, the gas emissions and the dangers here? And how are we being informed of leaks? Y finalmente, que hacen para nuestros hermanos y hermanas hispanicos? Eso es importante también.
Thank you, Dr. Kurt. Miki Higgins, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your comment.
Hi, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Miki Higgins. I'm a retired CPA, and I live with my husband in the Vining's Subdivision Off Ridge Road. We've lived here in Smyrna for 28 years, and I worked in Smyrna almost four years before that. I've been following the Sterigenics situation since the WebMD article came out. When this story first came out, I was horrified to find we had a ticking time bomb practically in our backyard all these years. We are within five, four miles of the plant, and I had no idea it was potentially poisoning our air, the air that we've raised our 27-year-old grandson in all these years. First, there are more than 20 schools within five miles of the plant, serving more than 10,000 students. We're talking about children with potential exposure. It's a fact that the ETO emissions have the very real potential to cause childhood cancers like leukemia and can cause other neurological issues. Any, in my opinion, in any amount of exposure to this ETO is too much when it comes to our children. My second point is that it's obvious that Sterigenics has a serious history of a lack of transparency with self-reporting emissions and has committed many violations of their standards over the years. Can we talk for a minute about their permit that was illegal? Anyways, in my profession as a CPA, I know how regulated my industry is. It's the way it should be. Sterigenics should be no different in the regulations they must submit to, especially considering how deadly a dangerous access release of ETO can be. At least I don't have the potential to kill somebody. The Georgia EPD must regulate and control emissions testing at Sterigenics, and it must test the emissions randomly. Clearly, Sterigenics cannot be trusted to self-report its ethylene oxide emissions. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak out again about Sterigenics self-monitoring.
Thank you, Miki. Amy L., your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end, state your full name for the record, and proceed with your
Hello?
Hi, I could hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Amy Landis. Good evening. I am a parent of two baby girls, and I live a mile and a half from Sterigenics. My daughters also attend daycare a mile and a half from Sterigenics. As you consider this permit, I ask that you keep in mind young children like mine. who are breathing the air surrounding this plant every day. I want to be clear that I want SterageneX shut down completely. Ethylene oxide should not be released anywhere near people, and especially children, who we know are more vulnerable to the mutagenic effects of ethylene oxide. I believe that 84 pounds per year of this toxin in our air is 84 pounds too much. SterageneX can afford to relocate and knows that is the desire of the people in residential areas surrounding their plant. The fact that they will not do so and instead choose to fight this community in order to stay is despicable. Their use of misinformation to justify poisoning our air is criminal. They must be treated with the highest level of scrutiny. In regards to the permit, number one, SterageneX must not be trusted to perform monitoring or reporting of their own ethylene oxide emissions. This seems like basic common sense, just like restaurants aren't allowed to rate themselves for cleanliness. The EPD should handle this directly, and if they are not able, the task should be appointed to a reputable third party with no connection to SterageneX or industry affiliations. Number two, stack testing is not enough. Constant fence line testing and ambient air monitoring around the plant are critical for ensuring that our community is safe. I also want to see more testing done specifically in Fulton County, where the risk is actually greater than in Cobb, and particularly in the Bolton and Riverside neighborhoods. The public must have access, oh, this is number three. The public must have access to all monitoring data on a frequent predetermined basis in a location that is easily accessible. The last ambient air monitoring result on the EPD website was posted January 8th, January 28th, for the month of October. This is unacceptable. We are being kept in the dark. Number four, the penalty for exceeding safe limits should be no less than a complete shutdown, and this must be stipulated in the permit. Consequences will be meaningless unless they are immediate and impact SterageneX's bottom line. They have been allowed to profit while poisoning our air for decades, and it must stop now. It is time for the state of Georgia to hold SterageneX accountable. I will also send these comments in an email. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Lauren Lassiter, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lauren Lassiter, and I've lived in the Smyrna-Vinings area for almost five years, and I bought a house within a mile of the SterageneX facility right before the WebMD article was published in 2019. This facility should not be operating in a residential area. The use of ETO is a risk to people's health, homes, and children. SterageneX has a history of operating without transparency or concern for the public. Short of shutting down and relocating the facility altogether, SterageneX should not be allowed to self-report their emissions. This process should be owned by the state with monitoring at the fence line and continued ambient air monitoring near the plant, preferably using a mobile SIMS unit. This fence line and continued ambient air monitoring is important for our community's peace of mind. Additionally, I did not see anything in this permit addressing what would happen if a catastrophic event were to occur at this facility. We all know ETO is a flammable and highly reactive gas, so the EPD needs to conduct studies on the potential blast radius if there were to be an explosion at this plant. The two fires at the Georgia Power Plant in the same area last year were dangerously close to SterageneX, so a catastrophic event is a very real possibility. The ETO explosion in Spain that was previously mentioned affected the integrity of buildings there up to three kilometers away from the blast and killed one person and injured others who were trapped in collapsed buildings and surrounding areas. There are too many homes, schools, and other businesses within three kilometers of this SterageneX facility that could be affected. The public should be able to count on the EPD to protect people and not to protect the large companies who are exploiting the health of our community for profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Jay Freer, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I thank you very much for this opportunity this evening. My name is Jay Freer. I live in Chapel Hill of Vinings, which is less than a mile from the SterageneX facility, and I've lived in Atlanta since the early 70s and have lived in Vinings since 1997. I specifically would like to push back about the proposed system that touts a higher stack as being a part of the system. Ethylene oxide is heavier than air, so it's going to come down. And since minute amounts have been shown to increase the cancer risks as well as other health, health risks, it, it isn't a solution to simply poison more people a little less by releasing it higher and letting it float down. Keep the ethylene oxide out of the air. Don't simply disperse it and raise the ambient levels for more people. 84 pounds of permitted release a year in the present location, which has changed significantly since SterageneX first opened, is too much. There should be zero emissions from them. Now, Mr. Mosby, who is with SterageneX, has made statements yesterday and today that reflect, at least to my ears, an overly confident and sort of corporate line mentality. There are numerous examples of SterageneX not complying or self-reporting in the past, and those alone should make this re-permit invalid. The EPD should examine and share blast radius of an ETO catastrophic incident. And beyond the dangers of the presence of ETO in our air, this blast radius should inform and guide the decision to close this facility permanently. The population surrounding this location has entirely changed in the last 50 years, and this location is no longer appropriate for this type of operation. It's now a residential area. It's not an industrial area like it used to be. Companies have some rights to conduct business, but it's unconscionable to think that the EPD is not protecting human life over this company's desire to make money. This site is inappropriate. I think you hear repeatedly here that the community is speaking up to say enough, we want SterageneX to close and move out. And I ask that the EPD reconsider allowing this re-permit to go forward. Just know that it will be our intention to continue to fight and to try to find ways to put SterageneX in a position where they cannot operate here, because it's the wrong place for this business. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jay. Valerie Jagiella, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Thank you. I am Valerie Jagiella. I'm a physician. I have lived in the area for 30 years. I have raised three girls in this area. And I want to first point out that the excuse to put it back into activity for the COVID and PPE does not make sense. Our face masks are not sterilized. We are given clean face masks, and we do not re-sterilize them. So that is inconsequential for the decision in activity of this company. Moreover, having lived in Florida before and in Europe, I can see that there are quite a few differences with how things are managed here and elsewhere. There are biomarkers that can be done if there has been exposure. No one has done this when there has been leaks, because the leaks are mentioned three months later when it can no longer be tested. So we are not doing what we should be doing for the time being. I am in complete agreement that this company should not be in a residential area. If you think about 1967, that was before Orlando had Disney World. Disney World area were marshlands, swamps, and orange groves. Now it is a residential area. No one in their right mind would put a SterageneX in the middle of Disney World or SeaWorld. We are in the same position right now, and I do not believe that the next generation should be faced with what my girls will have to live with for the rest of their lives, not having known that there had been leaks all these years, and them spending the time with that type of air quality in our neighborhood. I think we should also be very retroactive and proactive and seek out those who did live in the area, because it has been a very transitional area for the last 30, 40 years, and see how many really did get cancers. And SterageneX should have a fund put into place to pay for those families. If there was a fund implemented, they might be thinking twice about the cost and how much money they can make off this company. They have made money for years doing something they knew they shouldn't be doing. Time is done. They need to move out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jagiella. Srikanth Rao, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
There we go. Hi, my name is Srikanth Rao. I am on here from Willowbrook, Illinois, where we thankfully were able to stop SterageneX. First off, I'd like to say hi to Kathy Hoffman. Hope you missed us. But we're back. So this permit here in Georgia has a lot in common with some of the permits that, application that we saw here in Illinois. And there are some things that are definitely concerning on it. The first, what I'd like to point out, as many others have tonight, is the lack of ambient air testing and the lack of fence line testing. We had extensive air testing here in Illinois, and what the EPA, the US EPA, found through their independent testing was that fugitive emissions were 10 times the amount found in the models that were done by SterageneX and our local Illinois EPA. They found that they had to adjust by a factor of 10. Without ambient air testing or without testing at the fence line, there's no way to tell what the fugitive emissions are. You may think that you're capturing all of them, but you really have no idea. A SIMS on the stack is useless. It means nothing. Everything coming out of the stack has been cleaned. It's been shown time and time again that fugitives are the cause for concern. Now, I know a big deal has been made out of SterageneX hooking up the back fence, which they're not required to do, but the question is, why weren't they required? And the answer is because in 2001, after a few plants exploded under SterageneX's watch, they didn't want to blame the operator error, which was found to be the case. So they said, no, it's the back fence, and that's why they disconnected them, and that's why they got the rules changed to allow them to disconnect them. So I would be wary about anything SterageneX says that they are giving you. You look at, at many things here, and the question always is, why are the rules the way they are? Why is SterageneX allowed to choose their own testing company? Who did the modeling that's being used for this? Where, where was that modeling paid for? Who paid the cost? Is it EPD's modeling? In Illinois, SterageneX did their own modeling, and our EPA nearly allowed them to do it. I'm glad that Mr. Mosby mentioned the enhancements recently made by SterageneX to the facility, enhancements which were made without a permit, either from Cobb County or the EPD. At least no permit is on record for those enhancements. Why is EPD allowing illegal work to be done without a permit? Why is Cobb County? Is SterageneX just allowed to do whatever they want to plout the law? And last, I want to point out a statement made by AAMI. That's the Association of Advancement of Medical Instrumentation, pardon me. This is a professional organization that SterageneX belongs to. This organization, along with many others, as way far back as 2017 and 2018, has called for a movement away for ethylene oxide sterilization. But I'm happy to say that aside from the methods that SterageneX has purchased and then killed, like Noxalizer, the FDA has also recently approved more methods that are alternatives to ethylene oxide sterilization. Smyrna, Georgia, you deserve for better. You deserve for SterageneX to not be there. I hope that, that your EPD can, can see through it and see through the, the lies of this company and everything they've done. I don't know how people like Mr. Mosby or Ms. Hoffman can sleep at night. Ms. Hoffman herself has cancer, after working in the SterageneX plant here in Illinois with her office for quite a long time. I don't know how they can sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Srikanth. Kevin Price, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Kevin Price. I'm a business owner, a parent, and a resident whose home is in the affected area near SterageneX. Thank you for your work and your time to, to your public comments. I'm asking you to think about your work for a moment. If you thought there was a chance that your job was going to give your neighbors' kids cancer, would you be okay doing it? Any good, sane person would not. We want to believe that a company would think and act the same way, and plenty of good businesses do what's right, even when it's not profitable. SterageneX is not. A Google search will tell you that. There's a reason that the state of Illinois passed tougher standards for ethylene oxide and prevented facilities from opening near schools and parks 10 to 15 miles. And this company sits within only a few miles of our neighborhood. Time and again, SterageneX has acted out of self-interest over the communities in which it operates. It's like watching a bad 80s villain. Only the penalties are not stringent enough to truly impact this company when it's doing wrong. SterageneX should not be permitted to operate in a residential area. In general, its use of ethylene oxide is a risk to people's health, homes, and families. And more specifically, the company has a history of operating without transparency or concern for the public. Nobody's family should be at risk for exposure to cancer-causing emissions. Now, short of shutting down the facility, the company shouldn't be self-reporting emissions. You simply cannot trust people's lives to the company's good nature. The process should be owned by the state with monitoring at the fence line and continued ambient air monitoring near the plant. There should also be real and clear penalties for leaks or going over the limit. Would you really expect a repeat offender to act right if you impose no meaningful consequence? Now, I've done the write your representatives thing. I've done the call your state officials thing. I've done the watch committee hearings thing, and I still wonder at the fact that when it comes down to it, I'm emailing people in hopes that they'll keep my family safe. We look to our elected officials to protect people while encouraging a strong economy. And businesses should be allowed to grow and operate. People should have a chance to work. The companies that act in bad faith time and time again, and that put the lives of children at risk, need to find their way out of Georgia and reevaluate what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. James Ottley, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Yeah, this is James Ottley, O-T-T-L-E-Y. I was on the meeting, Zoom meeting yesterday. I want to reiterate my opposition to this company being allowed to operate in a residential area. We know that ETO is a carcinogen, causes cancer. There is no place for this business in, in this residential area, in this community. Second point is that the EPD's mission is to protect the community, even though the people, the employees of the EPD that are on this call right now are, are employees, I believe, and not elected, maybe not even appointed. You, you do work for us, and we are people that go to the polls, and we elect the people that, that, that run the EPD. And so I hope you And so I hope you remember that. I hope you'll remember that your mission is to protect the community, not protect bad actor polluters such as Stergenics. Third point is to say that having monitoring done by the company, by the polluter itself, makes no sense. That if this company is allowed to stay and and continue to pollute and give people cancer, that there needs to be monitoring by the state, not by a company selected by Stergenics. Makes absolutely no sense. And the next point is just appreciation for everybody that has so eloquently spoken out tonight for our community and for the children and everyone that lives in the community and works in the community. And then my last point is just kind of a just a state of disbelief that we're even having to have this meeting. That in two thousand and twenty-one, a company is allowed to pollute like this, give people cancer. It just, it blows my mind that we're even having to have a meeting about this. This company does not have a place in the residential community. And I'll sum it up with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Kelly D. Christina, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Kelly D. Christina. I live a little over a mile as the crow flies from Stergenics. When I first heard about ethylene oxide in two thousand and nineteen and the threat it poses to my family, I was immediately concerned and afraid. I have two children, one of which goes to a public school in the media area. When my kids play outside or we go on family walks, I often think about how much ethylene oxide we are all breathing in and whether or not it will lead to one of us getting cancer. I have also had a miscarriage that was caused by genetic defects of the baby. I often wonder if my proximity to Stergenics and the ethylene oxide emitted from the facility played a part in my miscarriage. I do not want Stergenics in our community at all. I want our community to feel safe and right now we don't. Stergenics has a history of violations and a lack of transparency. If Stergenics can't be removed from the community, the EPD needs to be in control of the monitoring by owning the SENS unit and the numbers be reported straight to the EPD. I would like to see fence line monitoring at the facility as well as continuous ambient air monitoring near the facility. I would also like to see it stated clearly in the permit what the penalties will be for permit violations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Barry Gottman, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Barry Gottman and I appreciate being able to say a few words here. I've been a Smyrna resident for almost twenty-one years. And I'm joining this meeting to express my high concern to the stories that have been written, broadcast on the effect of ethylene oxide coming, you know, as ETO, which we all know on this call, I'm sure is a human carcinogen. And when I first read the story published in WebMD in July of nineteen, I became aware that for close to the last forty years, Smyrna residents have been living with a wolf in sheep's clothing in plain sight. Stergenics, huge ETO, unknown emissions. At a town hall meeting in July of two thousand and nineteen, Phil McNabb, president of Stergenics, who honestly gave me the impression of being a used car salesman, not a president of a multi-billion dollar company, shared a PowerPoint presentation showing the company's past years of ETO emissions and how they have reduced to much lower current levels. These levels exceeded the EPA maximums by more than a thousand percent in many of the last twenty years, reaching highs of over seven thousand pounds of emissions. All these levels were self-reported, which who knows really what level was really was really true. But Stergenics is always suspect and I don't know how we could trust them to self-regulate any controls on them, which is one of the criteria in the new operating permit. Much of the media has been focused on the last couple of years, but the fifteen years before were way higher of ETO emissions. There's also a huge transient fitness population of close to one million people who come to Smyrna yearly to use and workout on the Silver Comet Trail, which is located less than two miles from Stergenics. I don't know if I mentioned I'm located just a little less than three miles. Few have any of these people are aware of the ETO danger from Stergenics admissions. I myself have contracted cancer four years ago after spending more than fourteen thousand hours on the Silver Comet, working out over the last twenty-one years, not knowing I was putting myself into danger. Unlike other sorry. Unlike other environmental dangers such as power lines, high voltage electric lines, gas pipelines and the like, there are no warning or info signs about possible exposure to carcinogenic gas in the area around the plant, on the Silver Comet Trail. So people are still not aware that they are coming to Smyrna to put themselves in danger. And by the way, my cancer is incurable. Had I been warned of the ETO danger, I would have never moved my family so close to Stergenics. Personally, I want Stergenics gone unless they can convert to another sterilization chemical to complete their process. Also, there is no way that we should allow them to self-regulate. And sometimes I've got to say, this is a personal opinion. I think that the EPD, EPA and Georgia EPD are more on Stergenics side than they are on our side. Notable backdoor agreements, notable lots of rope given to correct situations, let them operate under an illegal operating permit for forty years. This sounds like something that should have been caught by regulators if they were really looking in concern. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Barry. Lauren Caseberg, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name.
Hi, I'm Lauren Caseberg. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I also am from the Willowbrook area, but I coincidentally spent the first part of my life in Cobb County as a child. I've been watching tonight and it's clear that Darrell Mosby can be added to the list along with Kathy Hoffman, who I see on here tonight. Hi Kathy. And Phil McNabb, of people who think that you're stupid. They think that you're stupid and they're trying to play you. The fix is in. It's been in for a long time. These are people who are the heads of lobbying organizations that work very hard and diligently to create rules that allow them to operate unsafely and they know it. You know, Darrell Mosby said tonight that they're using the only methods that are approved by the FDA. Classic misrepresentation by Stergenics. They continue to buy out better, safer technology in order to continue their monopoly so that they don't have to expend more money. It's all about money and profit for them. You know, we heard the same lies in Willowbrook, that they made voluntary changes to make their facility safe. Do you know what a safe facility in our community looks like to this day? Teachers with cancer, police officers with cancer, kids with cancer, mothers with cancer. It is rampant. After thirty-five years of Stergenics being in our community, we had one of the highest rates of cancer in the entire country and at the top of the list in the state of Illinois. This is a company that is not capable of operating safely. Those are lies. The explosive risk, the cancer risk is absolutely unavoidable and it will happen. Kathy, Phil have blood on their hands. EPD, if you allow this permit, you too will share with blood on your hands. The idea of self-monitoring or stack testing is a complete joke. And these are rules created by these very people who get to go live in their mansions where they don't live near a facility because it's not safe. A permit by its nature is a contract essentially. It's a company contracting with the state, obtaining a permit. That requires good faith. You would not buy a car from these people based on their track record. You would not buy a home from these people based on their track record. But you are considering a permit involving the air that people breathe, the air that children breathe? Please, Georgia EPD, you can do better than this and you can deny this permit. Frankly, instead of this meeting tonight, you should be meeting with the attorney general of your state and your county prosecutors on bringing criminal charges against these people for what they're doing. You know, we dealt a lot with this concept of acceptable risk. And we understood through our state EPA that it was acceptable risk, that you're regulators, that's what you deal with. How do you balance the risks here? The risk to people in this residential community is their lives, their health, their money, their homes, their livelihoods. The risk to Stergenics is their profit. Profit versus life? Tell me about acceptable risk. I encourage you, please support the people who live in this community. They deserve better. Stergenics can operate anywhere. Pick up that building and move. Thank you. I appreciate you listening to us tonight.
Thank you, Lauren. Kathy Nar, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, I'm Catherine Nar and I am, I live in Smyrna and I live about a mile and a half from the Stergenics plant. And I've lived here going on seven years. I have two children and they are five and three. And, you know, we moved here. We never would have bought a house here in this area had we known the type of exposure that was just down the road. Additionally, my children attend a fantastic school that is even closer to Stergenics than my house is. And, you know, there's a huge fear of mine, just the explosivity of the chemicals as well as the air quality. And our school has done a good job in trying to do their best to protect our children, which means our children are not allowed to play outside. So my kids have not had recess at their school outdoors in over a year because of the exposure. They're in masks all day inside and living so close. Like I think about it as we go out and play and take walks and we have to balance the risk of exposure to the need for that physical exercise and and activity. You know, when they shut down because of the fire code, it was a great day for our kids and for our family to be able to feel safer in being in our community. With this permit, as many others would say, I would echo, the company cannot be responsible for doing their own testing and reporting. The EPD or a third party that is not tied to this organization needs to do the reporting. It needs to test the fugitive emissions as well as fence line testing. And we need that data close to real time. We need to get that information so decisions can be made. It's unacceptable the way that we have gotten reports on leaks and emissions so far after the date. I mean, it's flabbergasting to me to see some of those numbers and what was done in two thousand and fifteen within the last year. It's absolutely atrocious. So we need more testing. We need those results timely. This company needs to be monitored. I mean, the real solution is for them to move and go to a non-residential area. There's too many lives at stake. I worry not only about my children today and what they're taking in today, but any long-term health effects like impacting fertility and other things for them as they get older. And for the choice that we made to move to this community that that could impact their lives and their ability to have children later on just terrifies me. And even the idea of like selling our house and leaving a community we love, a school we love is also very difficult because the idea that you'd be selling to someone else who may not know what they're exposing themselves to. So regardless of what it does to our property value thinking, another young family could purchase a house in this area is awful. That company needs to be held accountable and they've shown they are not responsible on their own. Just as you've seen what happened in Illinois and in other places. It's just not enough. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Tony Adams, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Tony Adams and I live very close to the Stergenics plant. I'll acknowledge that I've been a very tough critic of EPD since I reached out to them in June of two thousand and nineteen. I always had a belief that the organization with environmental health it would appear that oftentimes EPD has sided with industry. So it has been a very frustrating and confusing message. I certainly would expect to get resistance from the sterilization companies and the ethylene oxide lobbying groups. But I think the community has an expectation that the Georgia Environmental Protection Department would err on the side of the communities that they are tasked to protect. With that being said, I realize this is a new and complex reality that has been brought to everyone's attention. The only ones that have not been in the dark about ethylene oxide for over thirty years are the chemical manufacturers and the sterilization companies. I acknowledge that the EPD may not know what to do. That's okay. We together can figure this out so that our communities can sleep well at night and feel comfortable going outside and breathing clean air. I would like to say thank you for these public hearings. They are a long time coming. Thank you for the efforts with the ambient air monitoring program. Thank you for purchasing and putting into place the portable CEM's unit. We look forward to seeing the results. Thank you for answering my phone calls and returning my emails. Thank you for trying. I think we can all agree that no one organization can come up with a solution for the community without knowing what the community needs. So thank you for listening tonight. In regards to the draft permit, I would like to quickly highlight some of the areas of concern that I have. One, allowing Stergenics to pick a vendor and install CEM's unit to monitor the stacks, in my opinion, continues to enable them to self-report. Will EPD install SIMs in the stacks and have monitoring results sent directly to them and additionally send the same information to the company? Number two, there is no discussion of fence line monitoring. Will EPD commit to adding real-time fence line monitoring around the plant and ambient air testing in nearby communities? Three, fugitive emissions continue to be a problem. Will EPD add another layer of monitoring in the warehouse area and once the trucks are loaded to ensure the public that products are not leaving the facility while continuing to off-gas? Additionally, Stergenics should offer the addresses of the locations of the warehouses where their products are being shipped. Four, will EPD commit to publishing penalties for violations with increasing values to first, second, third, and fourth violations in a twelve-month period, not limited to a temporary plant shutdown or permit revocation? Five, I would ask EPD to continue to use the numbers from the IRIS study as a guide to determine unsafe levels of ETO. A governing body from another state has no authority in Georgia. And six, finally, EPD, will EPD commit to improving the environment in the state of Georgia? All industry is not good industry. It is possible to be a business-friendly state while protecting the environment and the citizens of Georgia. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Tony. Jean Urban, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jean Urban. I am a resident of Mabelton. I am not far from the Stergenics plant. I would approximately four to five miles. My, my family and I bought our home here and closed on it about two weeks before the news broke. And we sure wouldn't have done so if we had known sooner about the dangers and risks of ETO in this area. We have a two-year-old daughter now and I'm terrified of her health and ours. I think you've heard plenty of comments from our community and our concerns and enough to inform your decisions here. ETO in any amount is not safe. The risks are too high, not just the air pollution, but again, the explosive possibilities. This community has changed from industrial to residential. And maybe that was the fault of governments allowing the residential community to spring up here. However, now you have the opportunity to do the right thing and make this company move. There is nothing to convince me otherwise. You know, I'm tired of, of government putting corporations with deep pockets ahead of, ahead of per, the interest of, of, and the health of, of people. It, it, enough is enough. In terms of the current proposed permit, uh, again, it, it seems like a joke to me. Allowing a company to monitor their own emissions is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, we've known for a long time, big tobacco also did that, right? They, they put out their own studies. No, we don't, we don't cause cancer. Um, it's the same thing. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. Um, in my opinion, the, the only option here would be to move, have this company move to a non-residential area or requiring them to use a, a process that does not in the ETO. They, those processes are out there. So, um, I, I, I think everyone who has spoken before me, you've done it so much more eloquently. Um, and it is important that our voices are heard. We have not heard anyone from the community in favor of this permit. So I, I hope you take this to heart. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jean. Nicole Smith, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello and thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Nicole Smith. I am a nineteen-year resident of Smyrna. Um, I work with children and with animals. And my reason for speaking tonight has to do with the root word protect, which is what the Environmental Protection Agency is not doing. Uh, the root word protect came into English by way of the Latin verb proteger, a combination of pro, meaning in front, and terger, meaning to cover. When you protect something in a way, you're covering it or shielding it from harm. The knowledge that came to light from the article in WebMD was appalling, horrifying, mind-blowing, and it made me and a lot of other people very angry. Because when you come to live somewhere and you have a family and you have children and you have pets, you don't expect that the very air that you're breathing, that's supposed to be regulated by a company that you pay taxes into, decided not to do their job and protect the people. Sterigenics knew exactly what they were doing long before that article even came to light, long before people in this county, in this state, knew what they were doing. And they chose not to do the right thing. So they should not have any sort of leeway or positive push to open up and continue to work. I agree with everyone else who has come on here tonight. They should be shut down. Thank you for allowing me to speak my words tonight.
Thank you, Nicole. Kelly, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, um, can you hear me? Sorry, my name is Kelly Kishel. Um, I am embarrassed to look like this right now. Um, I grew up near Sterigenics in Willbrook. I have multiple polyneuropathies, uh, including experta and trimmingal neuropathy or trimmingal neuralgia. And I have to wear a face mask in order to even survive during the day because wind, when I move my head touches my face, hurts me so badly. I, I can't live with the pain. It is, it's that severe. I grew up near Sterigenics. Cancer is not the only problem, unfortunately. And the sad part is me looking like this, I'm happy I still wake up every day because I know I've had relatives that don't. My mom died of cancer. My sister got cancer when she was twenty-one. And out of my high school friends that grew up near Sterigenics in Willbrook, every single one has problems with their children. We, all of our children have health problems. The sad thing is ethylene oxide, the lag time is twenty years. So you could be breathing in the air today and in twenty years, you could come up with problems. It's, it's a horrible way to live. All of these parents that you're hearing about today, think about their children in twenty years and think of all the problems that could have occurred. And that is what ethylene oxide is. It is a horrible life sentence to breathe in this air. Also, the permit that you're looking at is completely not even written correctly. Sterigenics has known about the fugitives that have come off of this sterilized packaging and has never once ever included it in their emissions, never once. From the moment they open up that aeration door, those packages are releasing residuals. And they're not included at all, ever. That is absolutely wrong. They have hidden this secret from people since they've started there. And those emissions, those fugitives that come off the sterilized packages should absolutely be counted from the moment they, they open the door from the aeration room till they end up wherever they're ending up. They are responsible for those emissions. You have to look at the IRIS num, the IRIS number from the EPA to protect people. You don't want them ending up like me. It's horrible. My kids have to look at me every day like this. It is heartbreaking. I am a forty-five-year-old woman and this is what my kids see every day because it's too painful for me to take off the mask right now. Please do not let other people end up like me. It's very, very difficult. I couldn't imagine all these other families having their children have to go through the same thing. Please do not let the permit go through. There are many other ways to sterilize products. I can't continue talking right now. I'll have to write in the rest of my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Yolanda White, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Yes, hello. I'm Dr. Yolanda White. I am a pediatrician and I specialize in environmental health. I reside in metro Atlanta, south of Smyrna. It's my professional recommendation that you hold off on this permit. It appears that a health and safety risk assessment has not been conducted. Uh, despite ethylene oxide being a known carcinogen, the EPD presentation that we all heard had no mention of health concerns, risk screenings, community assessments, monitoring of disease clusters, especially breast cancer, blood and lymphatic cancers and miscarriages. According to the President's Cancer Research Panel, Americans have a forty percent lifetime risk of developing cancer and this plant increases that risk. According to the National Cancer Institute, pediatric cancers have been rising one percent each year. Therefore, we should be making efforts to protect children and towards risk reduction and environmental protection. Ethylene oxide also increases the risk of bronchitis and pulmonary edema, which is very concerning as we're currently battling this COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, there was a study published three months ago in November in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health that evaluated ninety-three residents living near the Sterigenics plant by Lake County, Illinois. High levels of ethylene oxide biomarkers were detected in their bloodstream. This is serious. This is proof of exposure and risk to human health. You heard earlier that there are twenty schools within a five-mile radius of the plant and there was no mention of how children and other vulnerable groups will be protected. And this includes the elderly, pregnant women, nearby residents, those currently living with chronic disease, and also the Sterigenics employees. The CDC offers a CASPER toolkit, which stands for Community Assessment for Public Health Response, where you can obtain epidemiological information on a household and community level. I do recommend this and I can assist you with this. I also feel that air quality measurement should be done on the community and household level. In conclusion, there are too many risks, liabilities, and community concerns that far outweigh the benefits of permitting this plant operation. And from what we've heard, self-regulation does not appear to be a wise option. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. White. John Alderman, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
My name is John Alderman. I am a resident of Walton County and I've been involved with the, um, BD plant in Covington. Little background on me. I just came back from a little stay of visit in dry dock at Emory Orthopedics. So if I get a little confused in my English, I have reason. Um, that was last night. What a great bunch of people. Um, I was a nuclear supervisor in submarines where you learned engineering and science to stay alive and to keep your mission alive and to keep your country alive. I don't, I don't mince words about it. I don't take anything but the best. I was after that at the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Region Four, under Al Smith. I had ten states for the man where I was the one that really worried about nuclear biological, you know, the really bad stuff. I was super fun. I have seen this shenanigans and stuff before. Super fun at Valley of the Drums and Brickyard. And chemical spills, ethylene dichloride, for example, in the Oxbow of the Mississippi River at Greenville, which almost took out Baton Rouge and New Orleans. When I walked through the facility in Covington, I had been through the one in Cobb County, but when I went through the one in Covington, the machinist made in me, if you will, saw things. The environmental, certified environmental air quality professional, you know, you got all these names. It saw things. I'm a condition air contractor without any limits on what I can do. I did the part troubleshooting for the old Georgia Dome. I do hospitals. I've done ventilation systems around ethylene ster, uh, sterilization systems in hospitals. Some of it I had to do by remote because it wouldn't let me go in there because after you go in there, oh, it's not, it's not, you, you always carry that marker on your record. I am very much concerned that these people spend money in some places and don't spend it in others. I have a background from the EPA in being a remote lab operator using infrared and Moran. Gosh, it was so many different things. It was a toy store. But it was a, a mobile laboratory for determining what was in the air and what was in the water. And, and we, uh, we, it was very useful, even at the big terrible place across from the nuclear fuel facility in Columbia, South Carolina. It wasn't the fuel facility, it was across the street. So a lot of these things, it's like a shell game. You almost have to, uh, do, do look at the harmonics of the situation to see what's really being covered. Um, when I saw the way the atmospheres were being monitored, the first thing I did was I laughed. I laughed uproariously and I knew popping a Tevlar bag or using a vacuum container, it's an average concentration. You were shooting in the dark. You don't know what's going on. If I wanted to know what was in the air, I would crank up a portable gas chromatograph. And this is when I was at the EPA and the equipment was older. Or I'd use an HNU photoization detector and it would tell me instantly to get my backside out of where I was. Now, the use of the vacuum collection, again, I have, I will not put my name or my life on that. The only thing it works is instantaneous monitoring and reporting of conditions, whether it's in the facility or, oh, why isn't it on the fence line? There's so much research been done with using infrared beams to actually encircle a facility and pick up on things. There's no excuse that it's not being done. In fact, it's poor business because these folks in these business, unless they're self-insured, okay? They have to buy bonds. They have to have, it, it gives you a headache. All this insurance they have to buy and those insurance agencies are not in business for their blue or brown eyes. They want to make money by not having to do anything. So these people are, have to meet their insurance company's requirements. They're not even covering their own backsides. They're not just poor morals, poor business. And they should have moved from the area already. They should have built a more modern facility that we'd be, be better on their utilities, that we'd be better on their people. They'd put more money in their pocket. So you explained to me why you do something that takes out money out of your pocket and you, and you end up immoral about it. I'm sorry, John's kid doesn't work that way. And I gotta stand in front of a carpenter later and I hope he's putting the right words in my mouth. But the, so that, that's kind of what I want to say. Now, I've done, we, I've been, I do a lot of stuff for people. I built a laboratory, a bunch, Tamerkloss's laboratory, I was most of the building of it at Clifton Road CDC as far as, wait for the movie. Uh, the, um, the thing is that the, there is so much, there's so much available. Now, this damn pandemic has slowed things down. Let me, just two or three more, please.
Yes, you've exceeded three minutes.
Okay, there's no reason that this, there'll be money and profit and life for all if it was simply done. And let's stop there because I get really, I just don't understand. And, and if somebody can explain it to me, I'd be most appreciated. Thank you.
Hey, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Jose Cassiano, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Jose Cassiano. I'm a Cobb County resident. Um, I moved into a home three miles away from Sterigenics back in 2013. Um, a small cul-de-sac, five houses in one cul-de-sac. Um, after living there for six or seven years, I moved, um, about half a mile further away from Sterigenics facility, not knowing anything about Sterigenics' existence. Um, after the article came out, um, come to realize that, um, three out of my five neighbors in my old cul-de-sac, uh, all three have different types of cancers, uh, ranging from Hodgkin's lymphoma, stomach cancer, um, round the way, sarcoma. Uh, three of those neighbors are no longer with us, including a fourteen-year-old girl. Um, this is the new house I moved, which is only three point two five miles away from Sterigenics. Um, we purchased from a breast cancer survivor and we had absolutely no idea at the time. Um, I just want to say that it's, it's, it's mind-boggling to me that there's an issue in Cobb County in the year 2021. Um, it's not 1967. Uh, the population of this county is booming and it's projected to keep booming. Sterigenics is simply not the operating. Um, I, I just want to share that I, um, I, I, I wish that the Georgia EPD has the courage to do the right thing and, uh, and that you guys can refuse to be complicit in, in the poisoning of the children in the neighborhood. Um, I know Georgia EPD has I know Georgia EPD has a valuable mission for the state of Georgia and that protecting the health, safety, and welfare of our community comes in front to any other private business needs that there might be. So thank you for your time. And thank you, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Jose. BKC, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name is Brian Clark. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I've lived for over twenty years in the cancer danger zone of the Sterigenics Company. I've researched this carcinogen ETO, and I'm scared to death of this carcinogenic chemical. I'm even more scared of the irresponsible way this carcinogen's off-gassing leaks, et cetera, from the Smyrna Sterigenics Plant is being self-reported by the powers that be within the Sterigenics Company. I don't believe this permit goes into enough detail to keep our community safe at all. Example, what are the penalties dispersed to the Smyrna Sterigenics Facility for breaking any of these rules? For the safety of our community, I, we, need to see this Sterigenics Plant shut down forever. I'm concerned for our community for several reasons. Number one is the carcinogenic properties of this poisonous gas being released into our Smyrna area. It can kill, it can maim, it can cause cancer, and it has within our Smyrna community. Number two is the amount of explosive material which is enclosed in the Smyrna Sterigenics Plant. I referenced the explosion at the CTO plant and also the ETO plant in Spain from approximately last year. A metal door blew three kilometers away and killed a man in his townhome. Let's not let this happen in our Smyrna community to our students and a school in the area. Number three, the proximity of this carcinogenic ETO to other explosive material within the Smyrna area. Example, Georgia Power Plant, less than a mile away, which has had several, two times lately actually had fires, not to mention the coal ash ponds. And it's really just too much for a Smyrna residential area to bear. If for some insane reason this plant remains open, I request that the Georgia EPD personally do random testing weekly at the Smyrna Sterigenics Plant and make those results known immediately. If allowed to stay open, please, EPD, or whomever are the responsible parties here, please make the penalties for illegal off-gassing, leaks, et cetera, meaningful. First offense, possibly shut down for three to six months. Second offense, shut down for one year, possibly a million dollars fines. Just can't believe that this is going on and we're having to go through this. And I'm reminded also that the President Bill came to our community meeting at Cobb Community Civic Center last year. He spoke of many things but not mentioned a massive ETO leak from this very Smyrna Sterigenics Plant into our air just days before the meeting. Are you kidding me? Is this the see no evil, speak no evil, hear no evil mission statement of the Sterigenics Company? Please, please, please shut this plant down for our safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Susan, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello, I'm Susan Riley, and I actually live in Statesboro, Georgia. You're probably wondering what brought me to this meeting. I've been following this for several years now, ever since the WebMD article came out. My daughter and her husband moved to Smyrna in February of 2018 when she was three months pregnant. This WebMD article came out that summer of 2019 when our first grandchild was eleven months old. I am a nurse practitioner with my PhD, and my husband is a physician here down in Statesboro. Research is my thing, and I quickly did my homework. Dr. White was excellent in her description of the research that has been published on this ethanol oxide and the dangers that we know it causes. I can't see that there should even be a debate about such an admission. The plant has historically been deceptive and dishonest, both here and in Illinois. The BND plant in Georgia is just as bad from everything I can read. And it's all about money instead of the health of our citizens. I agree with everybody that has spoken today that the EPD by its very name and its very mission is to protect our environment. And I have had to take care of many people with cancer, sometimes of no fault of anyone's. But if we know a way to prevent this terrible, terrible life sentence to someone, it just tears me apart to know that we're not doing everything in our power. So please do not permit this plant to continue to operate at all and certainly never to self-monitor. They have already shown their deceptive ways, and you just can't do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. Alicia Quark, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Thank you. My name is Alicia Quark. I am a resident of Atlanta, less than half a mile from Sterigenics for about seven and a half years, and presently a resident of Smyrna, about two and a half miles away. I will echo what the folks before me who are in opposition to this have said. I don't believe that it is appropriate or well-thought-out to have a company be responsible for self-testing and self-reporting, especially in light of their past behavior. And simply put, this business no longer belongs in a residential neighborhood. Health, safety of residents needs to come before business. And I will leave it at that. But I am in opposition, and I hope that we can find a way to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Sandy Cedrak, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sandy Cedrak. I live less than two miles from the Sterigenics Plant. I agree with many of the important points brought up by others. The emissions testing should be done by a third party paid by Sterigenics and available to the public and to the EPD immediately. It's inconceivable how the fire marshal is not able to inspect the facility housing explosive chemicals, which could be a catastrophic event if anything should happen. Penalties should be clearly stated in the permit. If they violate anything, they should be shut down. Thank you for your time, and I do have my daughter who would like to make a comment.
Hi, my name is Mia Cedrak. I'm twelve years old, and I think that Sterigenics should not be in a populated area where they can cause cancer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cedrak. Genia Krajecy, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name is Eugina Krajecy. Thank you for hearing me. I've lived in Smyrna since 2008. My neighborhood is about two miles from the Sterigenics Plant. In 2016, I was diagnosed with an autoimmune disorder, which was considered spontaneous, with no family history of this type of disorder and disease. As this nightmare about Sterigenics, our air quality, and safety at risk were revealed in the special investigative report by WebMD, we all learned the dangers and chronic harm of ethane oxide. I am convinced my autoimmune disorder is a result of the emissions from the Sterigenics Plant. My question for Sterigenics is, if they are so concerned about the community and adamant that their processes are so safe, why do they take an investigative report and the outcry of the community in 2019 for this company to take any action? Sterigenics is operating out of a facility that is not coded to handle this dangerous and highly explosive volatile gas. If there is an accident, the extent of this blast radius and blood will be on the hands of the EPD. It would not only kill and impact numerous lives, poison the nearby water treatment plant, and endanger and disable Georgia power. Their actions, lack of transparency, and unethical practices makes it clear that Sterigenics cannot be trusted, and our community needs them to shut down and move out. I implore the Georgia EPD to finally do the right thing. Please hear my pleas and that of my neighbors. Protect our rights to have clean air. It is our basic human right. Do not allow Sterigenics to continue operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugina. Tori Hood, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. My name is Tori Hood. I'm a longtime resident of the community. My family and I have lived within close proximity of the plant for nearly thirteen years. Not only do we live within close proximity to the plant, just about everything we do is within close proximity of the plant. My office is in the area. My husband operates a small business on South Atlanta Road. Our five-year-old daughter attends school in the area. Our dog's born at Bark Avenue. The list just goes on. So as you can imagine, this is just a really important issue for us. And it was just dreadful to read the Georgia Health News and WebMD article back in 2019 exposing the threat of ETO to the health of our community, not to mention Sterigenics' less-than-transparent operations dating back for decades. My family and I are taking nearly our every breath in the area that is now referred to as the red zone. And we've been doing so for over a decade. And we're not alone. I know that so many in our community are impacted in the very same way. More disconcerting is that from the beginning, the EPA and state regulators did not put out a news release. So few people who live in the impacted census tracts were aware of the threat. And I still would argue that the community is not fully in the know about the seriousness of this issue. This was negligent behavior from the start on behalf of the EPA and state regulators. And it had me questioned, and the question still remains today, whether they are really fulfilling their mission of protecting human health, namely ensuring that we have clean air. As it relates to the air quality permit in particular, I'd like to first state that I'm in complete opposition of it. But a major concern to me is that there is no mention of fence line monitoring or monitoring in the surrounding community. And I just wonder how on earth are we supposed to understand the levels and the impact of the emissions on our community without this type of monitoring and data? I would say at the very least, as part of the permit, that the EPD, not Sterigenics, should be responsible for conducting regular and random monitoring, fence line monitoring, and monitoring in the surrounding community. The reality is that a business like Sterigenics should not be operating in a residential area. We're talking human lives here, and the potential, the possibility alone that these emissions cause long-term life-threatening illnesses should be reason enough to cease their operations in this area. Thank you all for your time this evening, and I just have to say I'm so appreciative for all the people who took the time to comment this evening. I listened to every comment, and it was very meaningful. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood. Jay Mack, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Jason McCarthy. I lived for eight years in Smyrna in the radius of the Sterigenics Plant. I live in Covington now, near the BD plant. So apparently, I'm on the ethylene oxide tour. I would just like to state that, first off, appreciative of the ability to comment and appreciative of everyone's comments here. I think they really need to be taken with their full weight. I think that self-reporting should be an absolute non-starter for the state of Georgia to consider with these businesses. The state of Georgia should not consider the TCEQ research. It's not research. My seven-year-old could reach better, more founded conclusions, and that research is an industry-funded hack job. The cancer and other disorders you're hearing about on this call and the comments, they're not coincidence. They're a direct result of exposure to ETO, known carcinogen. There's a known carcinogen in residential areas. Georgia's a great state for business. It's one of the things I love about this state. We will no longer be a great state for business if we're known as a cancer alley. And that's not what we're looking for here. I want to just stress my severe opposition to self-reporting. I don't know what the right testing measures are because I'm not a scientist, but you're the EPD. You can edict, you can stop the world, and make sure that you get the right input to develop the right testing that everybody's comfortable with. Sterigenics should not be a part of the development of that testing. I think the flammability you're hearing about is not a joke. I think it's something that needs to be taken seriously. If you had that plant or the BD plant in Covington blow up, there would be many deaths because they're in heavily resided areas. And that would just be an absolute disaster, not just for the loss of human life, but for everybody involved when we knew there was a real danger. We've seen great rebuttals in research from all the citizens here. You have resources. If the EPD is uncertain, you know, reach out. There's plenty of groups working here with real scientific knowledge that can be helpful as part of the solution and have us be collaborative with the government to develop the answer. I think that EPD has a role to play here where you can dictate the rules. Sterigenics should not participate in the development of any testing, the development of any of the solutions, because you're the ones that can dictate. You are the last line of defense for us, the citizens, against ETO. So we're counting on you to fulfill your end of the bargain and demand what we need to keep us all safe. We believe it's the elimination of the business entirely, but you should be able to develop something that at least gives us some modicum of safety. And what we see right now, self-reporting, is not that. And I just want to say one last thing, and that, you know, there's enough ways that all of us in this world can catch cancer, unfortunately. Living in Smyrna and living in Covington shouldn't be two of those reasons. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Jay. Janet Rao, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Thank you. I'm Janet Rao, and I am a longtime resident of the Smyrna area. I have three children who've gone to school within a mile and a half of the Sterigenics Facility. My husband worked for thirty-four years at that same school and have many friends that I know we've lost to the effects of ethylene oxide. Some concerns from yesterday's meeting, in the comments, a gentleman spoke from the Ethylene Oxide Sterilization Association and promoted the idea that the Texas numbers, the TCEQ numbers, should be the standard that the Georgia EPD should be relying on rather than the EPA's I-Risk, I-Risk risk numbers. I want to point out that Dr. Janau, who was the head of the EPA I-Risk study for the final five years of that study, has written a response to this TCEQ study, which is highly critical and explains why their numbers are badly flawed, primarily the exclusion of breast cancer in their study. Primarily the, the exclusion of breast cancer in their study and the elimination of, of other data that's relevant. Her letter will be sent in written comments before the 25th. I would also like to point out that the aeration requirements in this permit are non-existent. Eric spoke about sufficient degassing as part of the Sterigenics process. There is no definition of what sufficient is. That sufficiency is left to Sterigenics to define. And that is incredibly problematic. How does the EPD ensure that items have been de-gassed long enough, that it has been sufficient, to ensure that products don't continue to emit ETO as they leave emissions, emissions control environment to semi-trucks which drive around this entire metropolitan area and continue to pollute the ambient air? This is exactly the situation that's alleged in the lawsuit by the 53 warehouse workers against Conmed and Sterigenics, where products that had not been fully de-gassed were taken to a warehouse in Olympia Springs. And those, those warehouse workers have now suffered the consequences, the health consequences of that exposure. The OSHA documented that ethylene oxide exposure, so they did testing. And the lack of coordination between the EPD and OSHA and the EPA is just startling. Also in Covington, we had additional illegal warehouses that were emitting thousands of pounds of ethylene oxide because that, that facility was also moving product out before it was fully aerated, before it was sufficiently aerated to no longer present a hazard to the public. Hazards to the public is the responsibility of the Georgia EPD. And, and we would like to see strengthening of the aeration requirement included in this permit, should you continue to allow Sterigenics to operate. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janet. Rihanna Bachan, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name is Rihanna Bachan. I am actually calling from Willowbrook, or I grew up in Willowbrook. So I'm very familiar with the damages that Sterigenics has done. And I'm calling to really just ask that the EPD strongly consider what everybody has requested here because they know at this point that there's no level of ETO emissions that is safe, which is none. And this is not something that is a surprise. This is not something you guys are learning. This is something that for years and decades, Sterigenics has known about the risks, and your job is to protect the community. And, you know, as somebody who grew up blocks away from Sterigenics in Willowbrook and has seen my parents fall to cancer and has seen community member after community member go through this, let me just assure you, it's not just what could happen if you stay open. The damage is done. The, the people who live there have been exposed. And after the plant in Willowbrook was shut down, we're dealing with post-traumatic stress, really, the whole community here. Because forever, I will be questioning every lump, everything that turns up as unusual. And I can guarantee you that everybody else that I know in my community is doing the same thing. You have a responsibility to do the right thing. This is not something that you have to guess on. This is something that's obvious. Do it now and, and Sterigenics, because too many people have suffered, and you can stop the bleeding. Shut them down. Do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rihanna. John Hitchens, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is John Hitchens. I am a resident of Smyrna. Grew up in Vinings, just down the street from the Sterigenics plant. I don't know that at this point there's anything more that I could add. You've heard from folks with legal backgrounds, medical backgrounds, and of course, many of the residents from the area. I can say, having grown up there and spent my entire life in the Vinings and Smyrna area, with the exception of a few years in my years in Athens, I can only tell you what I witnessed firsthand, and that's too many people who I grew up with, both parents and friends of, or parents of my friends who have been sick. And as the previous caller will say, we'll never know exactly what those reasons were or what those causes were, but we will always question. And I just think we owe it to them, for those who've passed on and those who fought and were victorious with their cancers and diseases, just to be sure that we do everything we can to continue to protect and further protect those who live in the area. And, and you know, that goes to including people like my children who I'm raising here now. I love this area. It's my home. And I want to be sure that they are protected. It may not be, it may be too late for some of us and unfortunately for others, but let's be sure we can do what we can to protect others. Thank you.
Thank you, John. If you're calling by phone, please remember to use star nine to raise your hand, and we will call on you to unmute your line. You can unmute your line using star six. We'll wait to see if anyone else wants to make a comment. Caprice Thomas, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end. State your full name for the record and proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Caprice Thomas. I'm a clinical psychologist and parent of three. My family has resided in Smyrna this time 21 years and about three miles away from the facility in Smyrna. My children further have attended school in the area since their birth, and I carried them and delivered them in the area. I want to stress that those of us who don't necessarily have the expertise around Sterigenics and what they're doing are complacent or willing to be compliant and silent in the process. I'm not certain how my voice can be added to all the great information that's been provided tonight, but it is my duty and I think duty of my neighbors to make sure that you all understand that the hundred or so on this phone are exponentially greater than what is represented here tonight. And so we want to echo all of those things that have been said. Again, not to belabor the point, but this is not a community that is willing to be silent on the issue. We work, we live, and we play in the area, and we want to do so safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Tony Adams, your mic is unmuted. Please unmute from your end and proceed with your comment.
I would just, hi, this is Tony Adams again. I just want to comment on the ambient air testing and go on the record with these statements, and I'll provide this in writing to EPD. When operations were suspended at the Sterigenics facility from September 2019 through April of 2020, the Cobb monitoring sites of S1 through S4, the average ETO concentration was 36 micrograms per cubic meter, I'm sorry, .36 micrograms per cubic meter, and the median was .28 micrograms per cubic meter. That was with 95 samples. If measurements flagged as potentially biased higher excluded, the average ETO concentration is .38 and the median is .35. The background ETO concentration in Cobb County is not significantly different from General Coffee, State Park, or South DeKalb, though the South DeKalb site appears more variable than General Coffee, and therefore it has a larger confidence interval. So that's what was going on when the plant was shut down. Since the plant has reopened, the operations resumed at this facility in April of 2020 through September of 2020. The Cobb monitoring sites S1 through S4, the average ETO concentration is .67 micrograms per cubic meter, and the median is .58. If measurements flagged as potentially biased high or excluded, the average ETO concentration is .67 micrograms per cubic meter, and the median is .57. And that is with 107 samples taken. ETO concentrations surrounding the Sterigenics facility during sterilization operations are statistically significantly higher than the background levels observed at General Coffee and the surrounding facility when the works are suspended. The background observations at South DeKalb site are too variable to make statistically meaningful comparisons. I guess the bottom line here is, um, there's something to be seen here from when the plant was shut down and when the plant was opened. There is definitely ETO being contributed to the environment since the plant has reopened, and I just want to go on the record as saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. If anyone wants to make a comment, please raise your hand. We'll wait to see if anyone else wants to make a comment.
Well, I don't see any other people raising their hand, so I think we can wrap this up and adjourn this hearing. I would just thank everybody for being on and staying on so late tonight, and I appreciate the, the comments we've received here. Let's get it and remind everybody that we're going to be still accepting written comments until 4:30 on February 25th. That's at EPD dot comments at DNR dot state, or DNR dot GA dot gov. If you would, in that subject line, just put, you know, Sterigenics draft permit. Thank you for attendance at this public hearing. EPD will consider these comments and all of the relevant information through the public comment period, and that's February 25th. Thank you for interest in protecting Georgia's environment, your participation in the public hearing. The time is 8:22, and this hearing is now adjourned.